Called the regular scheduled this June council meeting to order. We started by welcoming all of our citizens and everyone that's tuned in online. Open with prayer followed by a pledge of councilman Hill, will you lead us in the prayer?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to handle the business of this city. God, thank you for the opportunity to work alongside these people. Thank you for those that work so hard daily for our city. God, I pray that as we handle this business, we do do so with you in mind, God, because we know from you all of our blessings come. Amen, I pray. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Would call a roll, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Lyle. Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Mr. Ray. Here. Ms. Fink.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Woods and Mr. Lyle both is out of town, but as long as they won't be able to be here today. Both on, but doing some training with the school resource training they had to go to. So I did get with both of them before the meeting and talked about what we had on everything, so. First set of business we have is approval of minutes from regular scheduled council meet. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
We approve the minutes, let's present.
Motion by Mr. Crawford, does there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Kirk, I'm sorry, Ms. Fink. Will cash a vote? Alright, cash a votes again. Motion care. Under my report, I'll start by saying happy birthday to my lovely wife. I'm spending it with y'all instead of her. So, um, hope y'all feel good about that. So wish her happy birthday. Not that she's watching this meeting anyway, but if anybody asks, you can let her know that I told her happy birthday. City offices will be closed over Monday and observance of Juneteenth. And then again on July fourth, Independence Day. So we'll be closed both of those days for holidays. You guys should have a flyer in your packet there for the second Red, White and Balliver Celebration. Last year, you, I think everybody here was able to attend. It was a awesome celebration and we look forward to having it again. This year be July first, Sand Beach Lake, Devco sponsoring the fireworks. And we also have some other businesses to sponsoring and with the city B A. And you can look at the flyer to see the rest of the sponsors, I don't know them all, so. But we have a hometown guy, Mr. Caleb Mentor will be performing. I guess that's Mr. Wood's nephew. So he puts on a real good show. Proud of him. He's actually living in California somewhere singing and doing big stuff. So he'll be home performing for us for that, so.
He did, uh, he was at Forest House a couple of years ago. Great job.
So come out, see a good live music show, food trucks. For some reason, the police department might ask not to be included in cooking this year, so I don't know why they didn't want to do that. But they, I asked, they asked if they could be excused in grilling, so I, we gave them. We gave them a way out when we got food trucks this year. I don't know that Mike now would probably still be working for it. Yeah, they cooked probably a thousand hot dogs and hamburgers and they said they'll cook if I help, so we got food trucks. Everybody come after that. Second, uh, next time we got the set date for our special council meeting. And that's, you know, we always have our second reading of the budget. What I'm looking at is the twenty seventh, right? If that works for everybody, we'll do the twenty seventh at six o'clock.
Twenty seventh would work.
Of June. And that'll be only thing we'll have on that, uh, that agenda is to pass the budget.
You said at six?
At six. And I know you, you be out of town.
Probably out. Can't plant it around everybody.
Yeah, it'll be not next Monday, but the Monday. What's my grandma say, Monday week? Something like that.
Can we do it, uh, I might get here four thirty. Can we do it four thirty? You want to do it a little quicker?
I love to do it early. We always waiting on you there.
Well, that's on time. I ain't do it at six, but four thirty, I think I can twist the arm or leg.
Was it do five?
Five.
We'll do five. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Larry. Well, now you know how we feel waiting on you all. So we'll set it for five o'clock for twenty seventh.
If they don't show up, you just call me.
You got fight tonight?
You got wrestling, uh, and move it up. We got for that. Alright, that's that on that, uh, so we'll have that meet set for that day. Recognition of Mr. Stack, we, I gotta, I'll take time. We got an invitation here, so if y'all are available, uh, the thirtieth at noon, we're gonna be frying fish and all that for Curtis. That will, I guess that will be officially his last day. Uh, I don't know how many years he's been here, a long time though, so, uh, Curtis be retiring and we'll have a little celebration. So if you're not busy, come by and join us as we celebrate his retirement. Uh, also want to announce, well, I'm sorry, back up, Juneteenth on Saturday. Uh, the Commission for Black History and NAACP will be joining together and doing a Juneteenth celebration at Sand Beach Lake. I believe that starts at eleven, um, this, this coming up Saturday. Also want to commend the, uh, our grants writer and all, everybody that worked hard on this grant. We, it came out on the news a couple of weeks ago, but we did receive the Brownfield Grant, Assessment Grant. It was a five hundred thousand dollar grant, um, so we, that property that we discussed that a few months back, we'll start doing the assessment on that to see what's out there and once we get the assessment back, then we'll look at moving forth on cleanup. Alright, that concludes my report. Standing committee reports, it's a lot that's out, um, so I'm not gonna read all their reports. You have the electric department, uh, report, the utility, try to save some time, we got a long agenda. The utility, uh, department, Cliff, Cliff, Jim and Tim are all at a gas conference. I really don't know who the number four man is, so I just, we didn't ask them to come. Any questions on utility department report? Chief Price is here, so see if you want to come on up?
First one on the list. Good afternoon, everyone. My report, uh, we had sixteen total fire calls. We had ten in the city, uh, six in the county. Uh, we had training hour, three hundred, three hundred two training hours, smoke alarm install, eighteen fire code inspection, seventeen, seventeen and everything. That's for routine.
Alright.
Fast enough, fast enough, right?
Next police, uh, Chief Jones?
Good evening. My report is as follows, I think it is, seven hundred and thirty-three calls for service, two hundred and fifty-one citations, twenty-six accidents, five with injury, twenty-one property damage. We had forty-three arrests out of those, twelve were juveniles, thirty-one was adults. We did four DUI saturations and, and special events, and we also cooked lunch for the teachers on May the sixth. And we had two hundred and sixty-four hours of training. That was my report.
Please, Chief. Next parks and wreck, Mr. Ford?
Parks and wreck reports on the following. We are into our third week of our new summer golf league and it's, it's going well. Kids are having a great time. We are extremely thankful to Councilman Mr. Dylan Hill as well as the country club for partnering with us and allowing us to use the course. So on Wednesdays, Wednesdays nine to twelve, we're really having a good time. Lions dance class continues as normal, Tuesdays, Thursdays, if anybody's interested in coming. The construction at Sand Beach Lake for the playground, we're still, uh, waiting on supplies, a couple of supplies, the rubber part that goes over the mound to keep it safe, uh, but it's almost complete. Swimming pool, we're almost there. We get our, we got an unexpected issue with the pump motor and, but we do have it and we're waiting on the electrician in the morning. Hopefully we'll have that, uh, prepared and be ready to get o- open by the end of the week. Also with that, when we do open, we'll be offering swim lessons, uh, for kids as well as adults. We plan to have an adult water aerobics class, which is expected to be on Fridays. And we also have an opportunity for kids to swim and, and be a part of a junior lifeguard program. So we're looking forward to some exciting things.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I sort of give y'all update on, on, tell you on the pool. We, remember we had it closed for repairs in, I guess nineteen, and then in twenty, twenty-one, we had it closed because of COVID. We got the repairs completed and Curtis was real proud of all the work they got done out there. And turned the pump on, I think it worked for three days. Brand-new pump that we bought back in eighteen, I guess to have it ready to open and, like I said, because of COVID, so the warranty was up on it because we, but it was still brand-new and we put it in, we only ran it three days, but I guess they wouldn't buy that store. So, uh, it took me able to find us a pump and we end up finding one in Memphis Fri- I guess that one got it Friday. And hopefully we'll have it open, so I know a lot of kids, people been calling asking about the pool. So hopefully it will be up and going and it'll stay up and going, um, this, this week, by the end of the week. Alright, uh, Streets of Sanitation, it is also out of town. You have that report as well as library. Mr. Watkins is running late, but you have his also. EMS, we got special guests tonight. We got the big boss here tonight, so we got Mr. Kevin's in town.
Good evening. Um, so I'd like to report on the numbers for our EMS, uh, service for, uh, the month of May. Total responses, uh, were two hundred and forty-eight. Uh, that included a hundred and twenty-seven emergency and a hundred and twenty-one non-emergency calls. Total transports out of that volume was two hundred even. The, uh, transfers out of Bolivar General, we had fifty-one, uh, forty-seven of those went to Jackson and four of those went to the Memphis area. Uh, we made two hundred and five seen calls within the city limits of Bolivar and then we had six that were made in the county. Also not included on those numbers, we had thirteen calls made, uh, inside Bolivar from some of our other units, Madison County, Chester McNeary, uh, that we may have had here helping to cover.
How many?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that last number?
Thirteen. Yes, ma'am.
Do I have any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and you also have Main Street report off to save some time, I'll just skip over that. Other new business, let me apologize for this long agenda. I think this is longer than I ever had, but I promise you it was not intentional. So it all came at the same time. Uh, firstly, we have the approval from Ms. Allison Hazelwood for the library board. Ms. Becky asked for her approval. I think Mrs. Dennis Sane rolled off. And we have Ms. Allison Hazelwood that agreed to, to serve, so. There any questions on that? There a motion to approve, Ms. Allison?
To move.
Motion by Mr. Hill and second by, was that you, Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Ray, if you would cash your votes? Our motion care. And next we have on the agenda the, uh, appointment of our new city judge. You guys all received the, um, resume. We had four, I think, to apply. Ms. Harriet Thompson, Mr. Colin Roser, Mr. Blake Sane and Ms. Anna Cash. Uh, let me say we didn't, there was no requirement that they be here for the meeting tonight. They wanted to come, they could, but that was nowhere that said they had to come or didn't have to come. Uh, only thing we required is that they, that they submit a, uh, resume, resume action that we appoint them as the judge. Uh, Ms. Cash is there and if nobody was opposed to, I would just wanna, if she would like to come and recognize, I mean, I'm sorry, come and introduce herself, we'll open the floor to that.
Well, I, good afternoon. I believe I sent a little synopsis, um, when I sent in my resume and, um, it would be my honor and privilege to serve the people of Bolivar. If y'all have any questions, I'm, I'm open to those.
What did you serve before?
I'm sorry.
What did you serve before?
Well, I started as the Assistant District Attorney in this county. It was my first job. I worked for Betsy Rice. Um, and then I worked under Jerry Woodall at the DA's office in Jackson for ten years and I have been in private practice in Jackson for another ten. But this is my favorite court to come back to.
Okay, a lot of years.
Any questions?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I always want to say thanks. Um, and the other three, I did, uh, was told Blake, he got tied up with work and he, like I said, would've came if he was, went for that. Uh, Harriet's, her birth, I found out her birthday yesterday and she's on the beach. Uh, but like I said, them, we didn't require that they did or did not come, so. Any questions or recommendations from the floor?
I'd recommend Blake based on him, uh, being, he's served as judge for Grand Junction. He filled in here in Hardeman County. Uh, of course, I know him by working with him through the bank and then he was our attorney and then my personal attorney, but, nothing against the other candidates, but I just happen to know his work ethics and know him.
Alright, a recommendation from Mr. Sane, any more recommendations?
I'm sorry.
I recommend.
I'm zipping up, go ahead.
Uh, okay, uh, the lady just come down, it's the first time I ever seen her. I'm impressed with her being here. I don't know, maybe she could've been on the beach or somewhere too or whatever, but she's here. And seemed like she, you know, really eager to do it and got a lot of years of experience, so I would recommend her.
Alright, a recommendation for Mr. Sane, Ms. Cash?
Uh, I'd like to make a recommendation. Ms. Thompson, she been judge, I mean, she been attorney for years here in Hardeman County. And, uh,
She has been a judge too, though. She has been a judge too, though. You weren't, you weren't wrong.
Oh, well, correct. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, I didn't know. And, uh, and that being said, that she had been judged before there in Orange, so I make my recommendation that we call Ms. Harriet Thompson.
Alright, any other recommendations? Alright, I'll, guess we'll just call a roll at this time, but you can say who you want to vote for. Between Ms. Thompson, Mr. Sane and Ms. Cash. Alright, well, call a roll, Ms. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Crawford.
Sane.
Mr. Golden.
Cash.
Mr. Hill.
Thompson.
Mr. Kenny.
Thompson.
Mr. Ray.
Thompson.
Ms. Fink.
Cash.
Alright, uh, looks like Ms. Thompson with three, Cash with two, Mr. Sane with one, so. Make a recommendation from those three that we appoint Ms. Harriet Thompson as the, uh, seated judge.
So moved.
All in favor of that? So one, two, three, four, two, my motion, motion care. Alright, thank you for applying, Ms. Cash. We appreciate your time.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Alright. Next, we have the bid opening for the EMS building or Phase One. I met with EMS committee, um, we meet our thir- Wednesday, Thursday, Monday last week. And what we're, Thursday, what we're ha- what we're doing, what the recommendation is from that committee, you guys, we know we got the old Anet's building. We wanted to split that up into phases, do a phase one, then we move to a phase two and actually building the structure for the housing, the units. We've been in discussion with West Tennessee Health Council, some other potential things that's happening, so, uh, what we're gonna do first though is just move forward, go ahead and doing the inside, basically painting the rehab on that first. So that's what we're, uh, opening for those bids up. That's what we're opening those bids up tonight for. We got two, one from Warrior Center and one from Hayes Hair and Construction. And Mr. Watkins got with both of these, oh, I seen him coming, okay, he got with both of these general, well, companies on the, uh, job. Total project cost for Warrior Center is forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's Hayes, Hayes Hair and Construction. Okay, this one is two hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So I guess we need to make sure they get apples and oranges.
Are all of these people licensed and insured and?
They'll be insured and stuff. They don't have to be a contractor because we're, we would act as our, the city would do the contracting part. But I guess.
If they didn't do what they were supposed to do, would you have recourse on them?
Oh, yes, they'll have to be insured and all that sort of thing.
I, I think we need to have somebody look at that again.
Yeah, I think that, I need to, can we set that for next meeting?
Yeah.
We set it for next meeting, kind of get clarification as to, because that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. A lot of money. And I'd like to make sure that, I'd like to make sure that he's.
Making sure we're doing the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you did, you, we, I, yeah, we met with both of them.
Of course you got free labor versus.
And I will tell you this. I'll tell you, I'll tell you about the Warriors since, so let me explain to you what the work is. If you've been in the building, they're, they're not gonna construct anything, honestly, except one wall. But all they're gonna be doing is tearing up tile, paint, uh, fixing drop sill in, fixing some patches, some sheet rock. And the Warrior Center, their labor is a lot cheaper. It ain't free. It's included in here. Lot cheaper. Me personally, I wanted to just use Warrior Center, but we had to go through the bid because I knew it would be over, uh, the bid amount. But I, I, I don't know that that's quite a bit of difference. I, yeah.
Both of them were told the same exact thing and walked through the same exact thing.
Is there any way we could put that off and bring it back at the called meeting we got later in the month?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, what's, what's our purpose in that?
Oh, bringing it, uh.
I mean, why, why would we postpone it?
I mean, just, well, I mean, I, I don't know, I guess, I guess.
What she's saying to make sure that they got good clarification of the job.
Because you know, we've had an incident before where we got what we paid for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do that. You can put it off to the next meeting or you can take a little bid and with the, uh, meeting with Ricky to confirm that it meets the specs and, and we've done both, so it'll be, uh, we've done it where we put it off and made sure that they meet the specs and then we've done it where we, uh, then approve it and just went back to it. I, I know, I didn't expect it to be this much different. I knew it would be different. I knew it would be a big difference just in the cost of labor alone, but it's.
Ricky, is that a reasonable amount? Forty-six thousand?
Were you comfortable with your discussions with them?
I mean, they got, y'all can see the quote, they got it, they have it listed out, everything they was gonna do on there.
Let's see what they got, just to make sure of that.
I mean, I'm thinking painting some walls and.
I, I, I was expecting around fifty to seventy-five, me personally, nowhere near two hundred thousand.
Let's see that.
It's nothing on, it's just two forty-seven.
They got a hard mask. They didn't have a hard mask.
I'd go with the lowest bid. If, if he feel comfortable, if Mr. Watkins feel comfortable about it, that he discussed the same thing to both of them. You know, it wasn't nothing, one said one way and one said the other, but the same, same thing, we go with the lowest bid of that.
That's the Warrior Center.
That's a motion, Mr. McKinnon. Okay, we got a motion from Mr. McKinnon to go with Warrior Center and second, uh, Ms. Fink. Call, I'm sorry, cash a vote. Motion care. And we'll get with, I'll, Ricky get with them to, uh, to Warrior Center and in the event that they left something out, man, uh, we'll be back. Alright. Let's have the lease on the Chamber of Commerce building. So what this is, the current building they're in now, as you guys know, may not know, that's our building, that's the city's building there. And that building is, we, they've been in the building operating and they haven't had a lease. If they do, I don't, I, we haven't been able to find it. So what this basically is doing is just, you know, making them sign this lease and they, like all the other buildings, it's nothing any different. They'll have to give us the, uh, liability insurance, everything that we require on any of the other buildings we have. So it's basic stipulations and basic stuff, not, not being able to rent it out to any other group or anything like that or businesses and stuff, so that's what this is. And I've already wrote this lease up, so. Any questions on that? Alright, is there a motion to approve that lease agreement? Motion by Mr. Crawford, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill, all in favor of wood cash a votes? Motion care. Next thing, I have the approval, uh, for using LGI, well, I'm sorry, Local Government Investment Pool, LGIP account for economic development. Care about that we give them the, uh, account things? We, do you have a copy of all? So what, what this is, is, um, and I didn't, if you guys looked back in your minutes, the utility board, it was two accounts, uh, we have here from LGIP. It's Local Government Investment Pool. And what this is, is these were accounts that have been with the city for years dating back to the nineties. And we have no, we have been unable to find any minutes, anything to show the purpose of the account that was set up, what it was set up for. The two accounts, one was a million four and that was through the gas revenue fund. The second one was through the general fund and it was four hundred and one thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. What I asked of the utility board, uh, was the same thing I'm asking you guys tonight. The utility board approved their portion with a positive recommendation to the council. Uh, and I'm asking for the council to approve these funds. And I'll tell you what, what we're, this money here is just money that we have that state started years ago and before any of us was here. And they, they just said in the county it gets six percent interest, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. Point zero six percent on one, eight, point zero eight percent on one and point one nine percent on another one. If you guys can recall, we have, I talked to you previously a couple of months ago about having, having the issue with not having land available for economic development. When I say economic development, I'm talking about industrial recruitment, um, not having properties. Now that we have sold what we have at the industrial park to Wal Innovations, um, we don't have as much land available to sell in the event that an industry comes in. So what I would like for us to do was take, is to take this, take these monies, put that in a fund earmarked for economics development to go out and build a new, uh, industrial park. Let's see. Let's, there. What we, what this is here, I want to make sure we let the password down.
Oh. I thought it was a difference. Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
So what we have here, uh, what we have, there's like a plot of, plot of land, a sixty-four, that's owned, here you go. That's owned by Mr. Ronald Plunk. It's well over two hundred and some odd acres, close to three hundred acres of land out there. And that map sort of lays it out. Okay, that map sort of lays it out. What we, what that is, um, like I told y'all, there, we, with Ford and all the stuff that's going on, we're getting visits left and right to our community. And the worst case, worst feeling to have is to be in a, at a meeting with one of these industrial recruiters or one of these companies, and they say, we love your community. We wanna be involved, but it's not a love land, uh, and I don't want that to happen again. This here, what I would like to do, if the council approves those funds to put that there, like I said, the utility department has approved theirs. If you can see the first, if you're looking at this map, and you can see this first plot of land, it has three acres, six acres, nine acres. Nine acres and eight acres, you can see right down there, it comes up to about forty-five acres. Mr. Plunk has agreed to sell us that, uh, for ten thousand dollars an acre, uh, which is, I'm sorry, not ten, twelve thousand dollars an acre. Which is, I mean, amazing, that's, the cost of land now, industrial land, is unreal with their charging, I've been quoted twenty, thirty thousand per acre. On other places, he's offered to give us the other land to the left of that at ten thousand dollars an acre. So what I would like to do, uh, if you can see this site analysis here, pros and cons, that came from TVA, this whole map came from TVA. I asked them about it, what they thought about it, us building out on our industrial park, and they loved that you could see all the pros and cons, the cons were very minor. Uh, nothing that was, uh, nothing that would prevent us from moving forward on this. Um, so basically, what I would like for us to do, we take those funds, set that aside for economic development, for us to build out. That park there, one plant at a time, um, and as we build that park out, then when a company comes in, wanna buy, we execute that option. Um, to purchase that property and let them build on it. Uh, I say we, we would be operating under the, the, uh, rims of the industrial board, uh, like we do with any other, uh, industrial land. So I came, um, I came upon this land and this project before we had the money, um, and I've been working on this for a while now. And I was trying to, before I brought it to y'all, trying to figure out the best way to finance it, uh, whether it be a USDA loan, or a bank loan, or from our fund balance, or. What we would do, uh, I sat and talked to Lisa, and she told me about this, and I'm gonna be completely honest, this is a blessing. An op, this is a blessing from God, an opportunity that most cities probably wouldn't have, to have an account that's, they're available. That could put us moving forward on purchasing the land and having our, having a new industrial park that's ready to go now. Now, I, let me clear up some things, so you can understand, there is land available besides this land. But the issue is, we need to own the land and have the name, land in our name, whether it be through the city or through the industrial board. Cause when it comes to recruiting industry, they don't wanna deal with Papa Joe the farmer, or, you know, cousins and families and all that. Cause it just takes too long to go through all that, and you, when we did the Wal Innovations deal, we, the industrial board owned the land. They had it zoned the way it should be, everything was good, they didn't have to deal with family members and heirs and all of that stuff. It was a simple board pass that moved it and made it happen, we would be, potentially be doing the same thing with this project here. So, I know that was a, I said a mouthful, but I'm just trying to make sure everybody understood what this was, and like I said, the opportunity that we, we have, um. We don't, right now, we have fifteen acres at the, uh, industrial park, that's, when I say fifteen, we have fifteen usable acres now. And the back section back there is like, uh, a hundred and sixty acres or something, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty acres or something back there, out of that hundred and some acres. We may have thirty that's usable, but the problem is, you can't access it, and we would spend easily. Ricky probably would half a million dollars to build a, a covert over there, easily, that's on the low end. Um, so opposed to spending half a million dollars on a big covert in the ground, I think we need to move forward on this, so. That's what this is, and then we'll have opportunities to build out on it, so.
What are you, what are you saying to the left of, I missed the?
I'm sorry, this, so what we will be doing, I, and I'm, so I'm, I'm basically tell, I'm asking for the request to move this money to the, to that account. I'm letting you know what my plans is to do with it, so once we get it there, the gas portion will be used for utilities there, and our portion. Will be used to purchase the forty, forty-five odd acres right here.
Okay.
And we will put all of this under option.
Gotcha.
So we would own this part, and we can option that, and once we have it in the option, then when Factory One, Two, Three, or ABC comes. I can show them the land and say, hey, there's fifty acres available over there, if you want it, you can, you can use it, and at that point, we would exercise that option. And then sell it, and I, I can't speak to what happened in the future, but there is not a single, if there's not a city around here at this point, that's giving away any land. With Ford being what they're doing, nobody's giving away land, everybody's selling it, so we could easily sell this land back when, you know, when we get to that point, easily. If not, sell it, finance it to the company, we have options, right now, I don't have any, if I'm just completely honest, we don't, we got fifteen acres, and that's. That's something, but that's not a lot, so.
Are we still working on this down by Tanter?
Yeah, that's what that brownfield grant was, uh, and the thing, that land will be open and clear, eventually, at this point in the game, it's not right now. Uh, once we get the environmental stuff done, and then we can, but like, right now, we can't, I can't, basically, I, I can't go out and sell that to anybody. Until that part, the environmental part is cleared. But we, yes, we're still moving forward on that, and that land like that is the perfect land for industry that, you know, don't necessarily want an industrial park. Or some, because the Tanteris spot is covered with trees there, where you can't see it, uh, from the road, but something like this is right off Highway sixty-four. And that's the problem with our, uh, county, it's like, it's, it's just, it's just so far off the beaten path, that it's just hard, it's, that's, it's a hard recruitment.
It's on a four lane.
And not on a four lane, it's not on a four lane when you're dealing with eighteen, logistics is, is just logistically easier off a four lane than it is off of a two lane highway.
Mayor history tells us that we have to have a farm option or property, because if you look back, we lost an industry because we thought we could get. The property that joined the industrial park.
Right.
And we didn't, so, yes, you're, you're, you, you've gotta be able to speak to them, say. We can do this whole deal, cause we either own it or we have an option.
Right, and that option is locked, if we lock that price in at ten thousand dollars today, if he lock it in for five years, it's there for five years, no matter what. Um, and that hap, that, I was, this was way before me, but we had a couple of, uh, you know, that, a company that came in and wanted that, uh, couple of forms, and. What was a ten thousand dollar, twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar price, when they found out who it was, it jumped up to very expensive, yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve your request for moving that. Local Government Investment Pool.
Second.
Account for economic development.
I have a motion and a, motion by Ms. Ray, a second by Mr. Golda, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried, thank y'all so much, I really appreciate that, um. And this, I'll tell you too, that money is, will be, uh, will, it'll still follow the same purchasing price or whatever, I mean, sort of the same purchasing policy, so. Once we get ready to move forward on doing this land, it'll come back and forth and all that stuff. Alright, the second reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero three, to amend title seven of the code, adding chapter five for open burning regulations. This is second reading, so we are required to have a public hearing, so, um. At this time, is there a motion to move from executive hearing to public hearing?
So move.
Motion by Mr., motion by Mr. Hill, second by Ms. Spinks, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, public hearing session, session of ordinance twenty-two zero zero three, is there anyone here that would like to speak on that ordinance? Is there a motion to reconvene into executive session?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Ray. Second by Mr. Crawford, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, any questions on this ordinance or discussion? Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two zero zero three?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Hill, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried, next, the second reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero four, to menip, I'm sorry, to amend title A, chapter one. Code for special event permits to be voted on by the beer boy, same thing, we have to go to public hearing, is there a motion that we can, I'm sorry, is there a motion? Motion of Ms. Spinks is our second. Second, second by Mr. Crawford to, uh, convene to public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to address the council on that ordinance? If not, is there a motion that we can reconvene into executive session?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Ray.
Second.
Second by Ms. Spinks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, uh, any discussion on ordinance twenty-two zero zero four, to amend the code for the beer boy to vote on special event permits? Is there a motion that we approve, that's ordinance twenty-two zero zero four?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McKinnon, all in favor, I'm sorry, would you cash your votes, please? Motion carried, now we're on the first reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero five, to amend ordinance twenty-one zero zero two, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. For the budget, this is a budget amendment for the AR, for Wednesday, the American Rescue Plan at those funds, those are those budget amendments for that. Alright, no questions, I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two zero zero five.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hill, second by Ms. Ray, cash your votes, please. Motion carried, next I have the first reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero six. Uh, ordinance, the amendments for our budget, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-one zero zero two. And this is just the bu, budget amendments, that's this sheet here with all those explanations on there. Questions on the amendments, alright, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Alright, motion to approve, there's a second, second, motion by Ms. Spinks, second by Mr. Golda, approve ordinance twenty-two zero zero six, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried, now we have the first reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero seven, the proposed budget, and tax rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So. Let me get to that, I'm sorry, I got a lot of pages up here, alright, so. Couple of things, I'm not gonna go through the whole budget line by line, I'm just gonna highlight the, the, uh, changes in here, not many. Honestly, this is just a, this budget is probably the most straightforward budget that we've had in, in years, we didn't do major capital outlay purchases or any of that stuff, so. Um, I'll just start, go through it all, and if we have any questions or anything, you guys feel free to stop me. So first thing, I'll set in the tax rate, I'll get that question out the way for you, Ms. McKinnon, there's no tax increases for this proposed, but.
Alright, thank you.
So on this, uh, no tax increase. Um, one thing that I, I will have to say, our city employees, our department heads do a great job, uh, because of them, we're able to operate within our needs. Um, I'm proposing this budget, a cost of five percent, cost of living rates for all the city employees. Um, also proposing this budget that we increase the city's, um, minimum wage to fifteen dollars per hour, so every job. Um, that every full-time employee with the city, starting July one, will be making a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour, um. Yeah, and me personally, if we're, if, if we can't pay someone fifteen dollars an hour for the job, man, I don't think it's worth us having that job, we need to figure out a way to combine it with somebody else or something, so. We doing that, there is a cost, there is a rank structure with the fire department and police department, uh, believe it or not, we have policemen and firemen, some of them making eleven dollars an hour. Uh, eleven, twenty dollars an hour, so they would all be moved up, so there, some of the ones that's employed now, instead of saying a five percent increase. They were saying like a seven, eight percent, I'm saying that right? Eleven percent for some, six percent for others, um, but those are just the ones at the bottom of the, uh, rank structure. Um, everyone else, we're moving up to the, with the five percent cost of living increase.
Do we have any idea how many people that's gonna be affecting?
Employees.
Employees total that's.
Don't know total, I know, let's see, police department is three or four?
Three, two vacant spaces and two that are there, so it's gonna be four and all.
Four and all, on that fire, how many you got?
About six.
Six, um, on the, see, I don't, I'm not for sure about the utility department or street department. Um, honestly, I moved a lot of the street department guys up even before this, um, but majority of them was police and firemen that we moved up. And a couple of admin positions, but it wasn't, uh, it wasn't a whole lot, so, but like I said, that's included in there, I can get you that exact number though. Um, see here, the, so the, um, police, lots of the structure for them, the judge of salary. Originally, it was eight hundred dollars a month, um, we lowered it to five hundred dollars a month, and that's in line with a lot of the other communities and cities around our side, in our area. Um, and, I'm sorry, let me go back, I did, I don't know if I said it or not, but the budget committee did send a positive recommendation to the council, I, I don't know if I mentioned it or not. Um, so, that's, that's included in there, we also included longevity, I don't know, for all the employees, um. Included that, and then we also included the, the, uh, increase in sales tax revenues from rev, uh, just basically. A lot of these businesses are selling a lot more, uh, sales, whether it's people shopping at home, I can't tell you the importance of shopping at home, that ten cent goes. It comes back, five of that comes back and we use that here locally in our school system, as well in, as our, in our government, so. That's sort of the high points of the budget, um, I can ask any questions or answer any questions. We did not do any capital outlay, all the capital outlay, the large purchases are with, they're with the, uh, COVID money that we're using for that. I did also tell the guys, instead of us putting budgets, setting stuff aside, to, I mean, if something goes out, we'll just come and come to the council and say, hey. We need to fix this, or something like that, I'll tell you now, it's a unit, we, we ain't got the bill yet, but it's cool in here right now, because of. Couple of compresses or something they had to do on there, and it's a unit, every time, soon as we get those some fixed, I guarantee you, we, it'll be another one out, so. I don't know that all the units have ever worked on this building, maybe they all worked and they built it, but the last fifteen years, there hasn't been a unit out. Think the fire department has one out now, or did y'all get it fixed? Got it fixed, so we're, I guess all the units are working right now, right? Today, so we'll, we'll see how long that lasts, um, that's it, and then I also included, like we did last year, the, the events. That we've, city events that we sponsored, Christmas parade, the barbecue festival, the Fourth of July event, as well as the spring, uh, event on the square. And also included, um, moved a little more up to have a Christmas celebration for our employees, we always have the Christmas breakfast. And I know a lot of times y'all work, and y'all are not able to be here during the day, so looking at maybe having something, whether it be longos or fairgrounds or something for a. Employee Christmas dinner, that will be a nice dinner, that we cater, maybe in the evening, one night. Budget committed, I missing a thing, I tried to sort of do the highlights on that thing. Any questions on, on budget expenditures? Alright, is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir, uh.
The, uh, fund balance. Look like it's, what, four million?
It's low, four million and.
Four eighty-nine thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's in fund balance.
It's four hundred, I'm sorry, right now, our beginning fund balance is four million, four hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. With this budget, we will be putting thirty-six thousand this time next year, if everything goes as well to our funding, and they put our. Funding and fund balance is four million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Uh, page five of eighteen, expenditure. Five, what it says, dispatches consolidation.
Five of eighteen.
Expenditure.
Yeah, where you at? This, okay, yes, sir.
Uh, dispatches.
Okay, I'll see it at the bottom.
Okay, a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, that's, that's what we proposing for. Okay, hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, is, that's what we proposing for twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, is the, uh, are you aware that it, any other, is the count, is other towns, I don't want Bala to be the only one paying.
Yeah, so.
It just don't, you know, so I'm trying to see is, is other towns paying their share, not just on the Bala, but, you know.
So I'll tell you where we at, so, hundred and fifteen thousand, hundred and fifteen, two, hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars is what comes out of the police department. The overall budget, uh, the fire department, every entity has, now, majority of it is from the fire, from the police department. There's a portion from lens department, I don't know what that amount is by heart, um, it all, the city comes, it comes to a total that we have budgeted for two hundred thousand, that's what we budgeted. Uh, I'll tell you what we're working on now, I hadn't checked, I know the county has paid their portion, uh, of dispatch. I think they, well, Mike, Atlanta, they, they sent out bills, so, they're working, nine-one-one is working now to get that contract done and where other cities would be paying, so, uh, I don't, do you know Larry, if any other cities have paid?
Talked to her this week, but she was to get the bill out to everybody, cause there was a question, did we get a bill, but, um, uh, the board members and Kerry did visit with the cities. Uh, we got a very positive response from White, from Middleton, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know about the rest of it, cause I didn't go.
So, right, we're moving forward, Larry's, uh, the chairman of, uh, nine-one-one board, and then Mike's a member of it. So, right now, they're working sending the bills out, but before now, though, the county and the city has been the only one in its past, too. Um, to do that, and I'm hoping, and I'm, I'm thinking what's going to happen is, here pretty soon, we're probably gonna have a new agreement from nine-one-one that states what our portion and all that stuff would be, um, it's still sort of in transition, so when the county had, when the county was doing it, they were signing, sending out bills on behalf of dispatch, now the dispatch is its own entity at the, uh, nine-one-one building. We will be getting a contract from, with us and nine-one-one, and every entity would have a contract, um, city involved, wonderful, every entity that uses it, county as well.
So you're saying you foresee, you foresee the, our budget going down in that area, potentially, the other ones to pick up some, is that what you think?
Nah, probably not.
You're thinking we're gonna be billed the same?
Yeah, I'm thinking we'll be the same, and the rest will cover a, a little more of the cost. I don't see it going down, but, I mean, that's always a good thing. I put it like this, I don't see it going up either, cause I mean, we, the nine-one-one wants to work with the city, cause they aware that we're on, that we're, we've been the only city that been paying outside of the county for, I don't know, forever, since, yeah, since two thousand and five or something, I don't know for sure the exact year, but we, us and the county's been on one paying. So, but I, I budgeted two hundred thousand, I do feel comfortable saying, I don't foresee it going over that, um, and if we do, I will bring it to the board and say, hey, this is where we at, right now, we've paid, put it like this, we've paid a hundred and forty thousand, and Kerry told me last week that we had overpaid. So they're going to probably credit us or either, right, so we won't be over two hundred thousand this year, and I don't expect us to be over that next year. Do y'all feel comfortable in that, what I just said for, I just can't speak for nine-one-one?
I mean, who knows what next year's gonna bring, but, but we do have all new equipment, we have a good director, we're shorting employees like everybody else. Uh, so, unless there's something for seeing that we don't know about, we should, okay, but, I, I, like I said, not to cut you short, I don't know of any budget that's gonna go down with the cost.
All right, any other, that has a question? Uh, any other questions on anything? All right, there are motions to approve the first reading of bud, uh, motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-two zero zero seven. I have a motion by Mister Spinks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Golden, if you will cash your votes. Motion carrot, thank, I forgot to mention, Mister Wood was gonna ask me, he did say he was in support of the budget, I completely forgot to say that. All right, thank y'all, uh, community, community development, all right, we did good, there was a lot on the agenda, we made it, is there a motion to? Which Larry, I'll give it to you this time, Larry. Motion by Mister Crawford, and a second by Mister McKenna to adjourn, all in favor, say aye, any opposed, motion carrot?